Ms. McGraff.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
I would like to move to excuse Mr. McDougal, who's unable to be here tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go on now to Item Three, Announcements and Community Reports. Item Three A is our COVID-19 update. As of this week, the state of Washington reports 695,016 cases and 8,234 deaths throughout the pandemic due to the COVID-19. Statewide, 69.4% of those ages 12 and older are fully vaccinated. In Skagit County, as of today, we've had 10,334 cases. We've had 8,270 that tested positive through the PCR lab tests and 2,064 antigen positive. We've had 105 fatalities and 590 people hospitalized. In Skagit County, 67.2% of those ages 12 and older are now fully vaccinated. The Skagit County Fairgrounds testing and vaccine sites continues to provide vaccination services and testing. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., they are closed on Wednesday. Testing services are limited to people who live, work, or go to school in Skagit County and are currently symptomatic or have had a recent exposure. First and second dose vaccines are available to those ages 12 and older. Please speak to your medical provider prior to seeking a third dose. As always, it's best to be safe by getting vaccinated, following the statewide mask mandates, and following the C2C recommendations. Any other comments, counsel? We'll move on now to Item Three B, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee met briefly with Representative Alicia Rule last week. She is a representative out of the 42nd Legislative District who has been focused on mental health, and she herself is an MSW. And we inquired with her some of the state's plans for how to address mental health issues, how we ought to raise our ranking as a state from 45th out of 50 states in mental health. And she provided us some feedback, some insight. I think it's pretty clear we're going to need to continue our work in that area and talk to some other legislators because we need to get more of an understanding of the complexities of the state mental health system and how Skagit County and the city of Anacortes can do better in that arena. We have heard from quite a few people, including the police chief, about the need for mental health services to help some of our residents who live on the streets or off the streets. And so, we've identified that as one of our main priorities for work to improve and close the gap in social services here in Anacortes. I don't have much more to report from that meeting. It was very brief because we were only able to get 30 minutes of her time. But we'll continue our work in that vein.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Are there any other comments? All right. Item Three C, Public Works Committee, that was canceled, and we'll revisit that next time. Now, we're moving on to Item Four, which is open for public comment. So if there's anyone here in the audience or online that would like to talk to the council about anything that is not on the agenda, it's your opportunity to come forth. Welcome, Mr. Graff.
Good evening, Mayor Gere. Thank you very much. Jeff Graff. I'm an Anacortes resident since 2004. Several events happened these past few weeks that cannot go unnoticed by the public or city council. Homeowners received their annual property value assessments from the county, reflecting on average a 6% increase in assessed property values. City council kicked off their 2022 Annual Budget Review, with the Finance Director calling for another 1% property tax increase, but failed to mention the city could expect a 15% increase in revenue next year to $86 million, which would explain why the city's recent financial update in the Eight Town Magazine touted, "The city is in," and I quote, "a strong financial position." So I have to ask, with $86 million in expected revenue next year and the city's strong financial position, why the need for another 1% property tax? If City Hall is serious about making Anacortes a more affordable place to live, why not start right now by not imposing the 1% property tax increase? Stop making Anacortes less affordable. I offer three reasons why you should forego this tax increase, because it's the right thing to do. Property taxes are up sharply over the past several years, due in large part to a higher tax burden imposed by state, county, and other local taxing districts. Nine straight years of property tax increases on top of port increases, school levies we're still paying for, the pool levy this year and others, has increased the cost of homeownership. Because the city can afford it. After years of strong economic growth, the city is in a strong financial position. With revenues of $86 million next year, up $11 million from this year, and up 100% in the last 10 years, this 1% property tax increase would generate just $55,000 of the $86 million forecasted. That's 0.064% of the entire total. And because your goodwill would go a long way in showing city leaders do understand what their constituents are going through to make ends meet in this current economic environment. So ask yourselves, is foregoing this $55,000 in revenue going to break the city's back? This taxpayer doesn't think so. And frankly, I find it hard to believe that the city cannot find $55,000 in savings somewhere in this $86 million budget. So with the time I have remaining, let me share with you just a few possibilities. The proposed spending labeled General Fund is roughly $20 million next year. That's up almost 17% from this year. Why not ask department heads to reduce the $3 million allocated for professional services to $2.98 million? That's $20,000 in savings. Excluding labor-related line items, there's another 16 line items with spending forecasted at $10,000 or more each. Why not ask department heads to reduce each by $419, saving another $25,000? You could look for additional savings on a programmatic basis. For example, reducing the Eight Town Magazine publication cycle from four per year to two per year and shifting content to a web-based format could save another $20,000. So in a very short period of time, with very little effort, we've just found $65,000 in potential savings, enough to forego the 1% property tax increase. And this only addresses the General Fund. There's more opportunities elsewhere. So in closing, I was listening last week, and now I hope you are listening tonight. As members of city council, you have a fiduciary responsibility and a moral obligation to be good stewards of our tax dollars before you ask us for more money. As your constituent, I ask that you make good on your claim to make Anacortes affordable for all and give serious consideration to the recommendations offered here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graff. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? All right. Yes, sir. Come on up. If you can speak a little closer.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, everybody. My grievance is these modified mufflers in town. They are in vehicles that race at night, and it's so loud. It seems like the most of them are coming out of Dakota Creek, you know, late night. And these mufflers, the decibel, is phenomenal. And I'm not the only one. You know, I came here to basically represent others who have the same grievance. I don't know if you're familiar with what a modified muffler is. But, you know, this morning I had chainsaws outside, you know, cutting the tree limbs where my studio is. And they were far quieter than these modified mufflers that are racing down, not only racing down, but at extreme speed on O Avenue and Commercial throughout the night. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention, you know, maybe put it up on the sign when we come in, you know, where it says, like, fiber optic cable or, you know, we have these signs on R Avenue and such, you know, that people at night, you know, aren't racing. And, I mean, it's really, really, really loud. So that's all I have. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you coming. This is the first I've heard of it. And you want to reach out to my office, let me give me more information. That would be helpful.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Thanks for coming tonight. Is there any other comments this evening? All right. So we'll move on now to Item Five. It's our Consent Agenda, Items A through F.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to our public hearing. Item Six A, and this is our Anacortes Community Forestlands Comprehensive Plan Update. This is for discussion only this evening. Mr. Lunsford, Mr. Voges, are you with us online?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Gere, members of the council, members of the audience. This is Bob Voges, and I'm sitting here with John Lunsford, in case you hadn't noticed. I, we put together a little packet for you that you should have received in a timely manner, which I'm sure you did. There was a memo there that, for me, that highlighted the contents. Just touching on that briefly, we only received the one written comment prior to the deadline to get the council packet in. We did receive two more written comments, I think one Friday and one today. And I believe those have been forwarded to you as well. I also included the only written comments that we could find from the Planning Commission back in 2019 from Ms. Hall. Those were there as well. Let's see. We did talk about on September 13th, when I kind of did the broad brush stroke review of the plan, members of the council had a few comments about e-bikes and some questions about e-bikes. And I really feel like the work at the Forest Advisory Board level is unfinished on this front. It was something that we, we really did started getting into right before kind of COVID came along and disrupted our public meeting schedule. And so, John and I are basically recommending that you give the Forest Advisory Board a chance to get a little deeper into the weeds on that front and make a future recommendation to the council. But we will certainly act at your pleasure. One change to the plan that staff is asking for is we would like to take away the Planning Commission membership designation of one of the Forest Advisory Board members. You know, back in the 90s, there was a lot more interplay between adjacent development in the city and the forest lands. That's all but completed now. There's a couple parcels out there, but it's that crossover relationship is not as critical as it once was. And, you know, our volunteers have a lot on their shoulders, and so we'd like to be able to find one that doesn't have to carry the membership of both of these bodies to go forward. We do have a little language in the appendix with the trail use, especially the, that pertains to the equestrian folks. We can clean up and clarify. We are recommending the closure of a trail, which is not something we do very often. We are going to share the screen here, and I believe you've got this map, thanks to Rob Hoxey, for putting this together. And if you are familiar with this trail, 132, this is the southern shore of Little Cranberry Lake. And that trail, well, it's a fun and challenging hike. It's really become next to impossible for us to maintain without a lot of in-water work, which we really try to avoid. As you can see from the map, going around, you know, using the existing trails to get around the lake really only adds a couple of minutes. Even if you're on foot, it's not very far out of the way. 132 has become really an unsafe and eroded trail, and we feel like that's an area that we can work to close off. And if you do support this request, it does take sometimes years to properly close a trail because there's always going to be people that, that's their favorite route, and they're going to want to use it. But we really would like to close it off. And, you know, other than that, you know, the comments that we did receive have been largely about formatting the plan. There's been a couple of language things. I didn't prepare tonight to go too deep into that, those specifics, because I wasn't sure what to expect from the public hearing. And really, from this point forward, I am happy to, to work on whatever focus points that you, the council, would like me and the rest of our staff to work on.
All right. So before we dive into this, this is a public hearing. And if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to talk to the council, raise your hand and come on up. Yes, sir. Come on.
Good evening, mayor and council members, members of the audience. Thank you for some time on the agenda today. My name is Steve Charvat. I'm probably one of the newest residents of Anacortes, having just moved here in April. My partner and I are actually building a new home on the short plate at 27th and B in the city. And because our actual parcel is directly abutting the ACFL, we have both, we both have a keen interest in this topic. Like many of you, the pandemic caused us to reevaluate and look at different things in our lives as it's caused issues with everybody in this room. It caused us a major change because we were going to build our home on a very large acreage next to Deception Pass. The lumber prices going up 400% had us reevaluate building that home there. We fell in love with the city, found this acre, this parcel of land, and quickly learned about what the ACFL deeds and restrictions were. Having read all them, we decided to actually build, knowing that half of our property would be undeveloped. But that's what drew us to the city and specifically to this parcel of land. I applaud the council and the other advisory groups who oversee this because having moved from Seattle, where we had seen over many decades most of the forests and trees being removed and having very little public space available, I applaud this group and the council for maintaining the integrity of that land for public use. We also have three rescue dogs. And the idea of having an off-leash dog area is going to be very important, not only for us, but I understand and I see on a daily basis that this city truly is a dog city. And having options for dogs that will not ruin the pristine nature of the forest lands is really important in terms of the future. So once again, I applaud the group, applaud our elected officials for maintaining the integrity of those lands, knowing that there's going to always have to be some compromise. But thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to enjoying those forest lands for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Brian Wetcher has his hand up. So Brian, I see you.
Thank you, mayor, council members. I'm Brian Wetcher, 2407 Forest Park Lane. And once again, I sort of rise to a point of privilege as a Forest Board member to suggest that you should move forward with the plan as it is. I thoroughly endorse both the trail closure, which unfortunately is necessary, as Bob and John both pointed out, not only from the standpoint of safety of our residents, but also for the integrity of the shoreline and the watershed. I also endorse the language changes that they put forward. And I would hope the council would be very direct with staff, particularly this evening, to specify any alterations that they think need to go forward. Currently, the board in regards to e-bikes has erred on the side of caution and restricted those e-bikes to the same trails that other motorized traffic motorcycles are restricted to. So thank you very much. I really urge you to adopt this 2014 plan. It would be only good governance to get it done before the end of the year. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. And now I see Asadine. Your hand is up.
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Asadine. I am here representing the Friends of the Anacortes Community Forestlands. And I also want to speak largely in favor of what we're seeing in this recent management plan update. You know, there are some small things, you know, like, for example, an email I received notes that the paragraph, or page four, paragraph 10, "State's friends have provided forest education for 20 years." That's a bit outdated. I would like to update that minor detail, but I fully support the language changes I've seen from the parks so far. I, we absolutely, as an organization, support the closing of Trail 132. It's seen far too much wear and tear and is way too close to the lake's edge to do any sort of effective rehabilitation there. And we also support the removal of the Planning Commission requirement for having a Planning Commission member on the Forest Advisory Board as well. The only other area I'd like to draw some attention is to some of the language and education. I think that it would behoove us to include some language regarding climate change and the effects of the larger changing world on the forest lands themselves as a priority. And that's certainly something that we, as an organization, have put as a priority in our educational offerings to the community and to students as well. So I'd love to see some language regarding climate change in there. And then just want to note that we really appreciate the close relationship that we do have with the Parks and Rec Department. In case city council members don't know, we do attend all Forest Advisory Board meetings as guests and are invited to provide updates and speak at those. And then I'm in regular contact with Bob Voges, having a walk and talk every couple of weeks with him to discuss the goings-on and the, and also regular check-ins with John Lunsford regarding what's happening in the forest lands. So I just want to appreciate that relationship that we do have and appreciate having that in the, in the plan here as well, talking about the relationship that we share going back decades now. So with that, I will leave you to it.
Thank you, Asadine. Any other members of the audience or online that would like to comment tonight? All right. I'm going to turn it over to council and staff. Council, what's your thoughts?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I'm largely okay with moving forward the plan as it is now. I certainly think it can be improved. There are a couple of things mentioned just now. There are a couple of useful highlights in Kathleen Flanagan's letter. Some of the other letters in the record, I think, have been overtaken by events because subsequent to their letters, prior to today, we've adopted a new Critical Areas Ordinance. I'm primarily okay with moving the plan forward now with a commitment to revisiting it soon. Because as somebody just today pointed out, you know, it can be difficult to read. It's not really formatted in an easily readable way because it appears to still be the old PDF. So we probably need to do some greater updates to it. We absolutely need to address planning for climate change. I think that takes a couple of forms. One, tree disease. There were a couple of newspaper articles a while back that really highlighted that in the ACFL. And then forest fire planning. And so, a couple of us have been working on an ordinance for a while that would bring forward some parameters for the plan. And I think that'd be great for the next version of the plan, like, maybe adopt this one, get this going. And then set out the parameters for the plan before we start work on the next version. And then also, it would codify the Conservation Easement Program and codify the Forest Board, because you can't, can't find those things in our code right now like you can similar boards and other programs. But I'm okay with moving this draft forward now because it makes a couple of important updates that helps us move forward. I'm also perfectly okay with deferring the question of e-bikes a little later and having a more thorough conversation of it, rather than trying to force that into the plan at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Other members of the council.
Mayor Gere.
Okay. Ms. Cleland McGrath, and then Mr. Young.
Hey, I was just going to say that there is an attendee who would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. I was waiting for you all. So you have anything? No? So Anthony, do you have anything? And then I'll move back to the members of the audience.
Okay. No, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Walter said and also some of the sentiments expressed by Mr. Wetcher. And also to commend the staff for just really bringing a, just the details and the work that's been going into it. I, again, like the idea of revisiting e-bikes and what the definition of those are because there's this huge stratus. And as Mr. Walter said, this is not probably the moment to do that, and we'll do that at some later point. So, thank you.
Yeah. Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Cleland.
If we're making comments, oh, that's fine. I think that this is a good document. It's still a working document like any of our plans. The stakeholders have reviewed it recently. I think staff's done a great job. We've got, we got some, we've received comments. I think those are things that we can integrate in. But the vote of approval from not only staff and council, but also the other folks in our community, makes me feel comfortable moving forward with it just to get it done and on the books, and we can continue to refine it moving forward. Again, e-bikes are one of those things that should be at a committee level because I think it needs to be a deep dive and not something that we're discussing at this point in time. So to me, I'm very comfortable moving forward with those certain corrections that were alluded to.
Thank you. Okay. Any other council comments before I go back to the audience?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I also would like to thank all the people that have contributed to this, the Forest Advisory Board, and the conversations with Friends of the Forest, and the staff work. That gives me a lot of confidence moving forward that this is a really good plan. And as always, as Ms. Cleland McGrath alluded to, it's going to need tweaking. And the motorized bike issue is going to need a very deep dive with looks at what other communities have done around the country because that's really going to affect the future of our forest lands with our increased usage in all user groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. All right. So at this time, I'll go to the audience. Ms. Hollihan.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Sarah Hollihan. I live at 151138 Street, Anacortes, Washington. As this was worked on in 2014, I would like to see the council commit to I would like to see the council commit to working on this in 2022. It's kind of upsetting that this is so behind schedule. And so that would be my first comment. Secondly, the forest lands are the most incredible resource in Anacortes. And we have a forest advisory board. And as far as I could tell, this is not actually in our Anacortes municipal code. If you look at Title II for Administration and Personnel, there's numerous advisory and boards, including the Street Tree Advisory Board, the Parks Advisory Board. But the Forest Advisory Board has not reached this level of being included. And I think this is a big, very important that that gets included in our municipal code. And in my comments, I suggested we have someone from the Friends of the Anacortes Community Forestlands be on that board because they're very involved and they would be a great asset. And those, and number three, my big concern is this isn't often talked about tonight, is adding a commercial use under the discretion of the director with absolutely zero guidelines? Seems very premature to me for city councils to approve this. With, is this going to, you know, we can have 25 people in the forest doing something commercially? I think this needs to be worked on a lot more before this gets passed. So thank you for your time. I am on my computer at home, and I do have a friend here who might like to speak on this same Zoom account, if that's possible. Thank you.
Yes, yes, go ahead. Introduce your friend, introduce himself to speak.
Okay, good.
Just introducing the senior.
This is Maureen Sheets at 1509 10th Street, Anacortes. My concerns about having an open commercial business of any sort in the forest lands is that I have not heard of any parameters or guidelines that these groups would have to follow. And I think what's important in our forest lands is to educate people on how to be good land stewards. So I think we need to take a little more time and review. What are our designations? What are our parameters? What are our guidelines that these groups would be following? Most guides have to be registered. They need a commercial permit. They need to pay in a fee system, and that's an annual fee and a fee per person. So I think we're a little premature here. I'm a little late coming on to this conversation, but I feel we'd be making a large mistake to have all these people come in for commercial purpose and to not have any of these parameters in place. So if we could take a little more time and think this through so we're not backstepping once we've already opened it up to the commercial side, I think that would be smart. And I think we have the time to do that. If it's actually been seven years since this has been looked at, I think it's time we look at it in today's world and how things have changed since 2014. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, back to you. Our staff, any comments or rebuttal on anything we've heard?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I wonder if Mr. Lunsford, Mr. Volks could talk about commercial use and what they envision related to that provision in the plan?
Thank you, Mr. Walters, Mayor Gere, members of the audience. So what we've done with commercial use in the forest lands is with maybe, so you have on Mount Erie, you have guided groups that climb on Mount Erie. Many of those are nonprofit, but some of those are commercial groups. So they've done that for some time, and we've tried to work with those groups based on recommendations of the forest board and the Mount Erie Committee. So it's no more than 50 at a time, and that includes guides and instructors. So in the forest lands outside of Mount Erie, I can think of one instance when we've allowed a commercial use, and that was we tried several years ago to have a group that wanted to do paddleboard yoga on the lake. They tried to do that for a while. It wasn't profitable, but we figured, Mr. Robinson and I at the time, figured that was the de minimis use. The groups were about five to six people. Generally, we don't allow commercial use of any type. We get a lot of requests from runs to, you know, television commercial shoots or things like that. Mount Erie is the place that some of them have done that. Sometimes Hart Lake Road, they've done that. But in the forest lands itself, we've not allowed it in the trail system outside of State of Summit or the climbing areas because the climbing areas, as I say, have a little bit different use and a little bit different guidance on them. So, I mean, our view's been very conservative and very restricted. We don't plan on seeing that change. We've talked about that, to change the topic slightly, in the Conservation Easement Program language that we're working on with the Skagit Land Trust. They discussed, you know, issues, you know, you could have some commercial use with educational groups or things of that nature. We've tried to keep those groups more of a nonprofit nature where you don't have to pay to use the forest lands, that it's open to everyone and that anyone can participate in those groups just by registering. So that's been the approach we've used. We haven't really tried to do any commercial programming or instances beyond that.
Yeah, I am supportive of limited commercial use, sort of along the lines that you've talked about. Seems to me we did have a commercial outfit do a TV advertisement at some point. Maybe it was in the parks, maybe not in the forest lands. But I guess my concern is making sure we have parameters around it because government can't really pick or choose which users it likes or doesn't like without a neutral basis. So whether that's Parks Department policy or Mayor's policy or written into the plan, I don't think it matters too much just so long as we have a written policy so that somebody doesn't complain that they were excluded because they had a good idea that was similar to somebody else's. And maybe that kind of stuff goes through the forest board and then gets reduced to policy and people get to pursue anything that's within the policy. But I'm fine with moving the plan forward again as it is and then revisiting that as part of the next update, which I agree should be very soon. And I think Ms. Hollihan is very correct about the forest advisory board really should be in the municipal code. And we've worked that into that follow-on ordinance because it ought to be available for everybody to find, just like everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Any other comments?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I would, I agree with some parameters for commercial use in the next update and also more language about climate change as we've heard requests for from multiple people. I think that would be very fitting in this document also. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, we have another hand up, Sandra Starbuck. Welcome.
Hi, Sandra Starbuck, and I'm on the forest advisory board. And I just wanted to say that in, up to, leading up to the time that we submitted this, we had really done a lot, a lot of work on this plan and a lot of public meetings and public comments and things like that. And I feel like it's really a good guide. And yes, it does need a little bit of tweaking. But I would really like to see it move forward as it is right now and then work on these things that we need to get it current in our next update, which should be, you know, in the next year or two anyway. And that would be the e-bikes issue as well as some climate change wording. And also the commercial use that we were just talking about or that was just being talked about. And, but I feel like other than that and some clerical, you know, just some corrections and cleanup and stuff like that, I feel like we should be able to, I would really like to see this move forward as much as, as soon as we could.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any other discussion? So do I hear any reason not to close the public hearing tonight? So, so any other comments from the audience? So Brian, your hands up again. Go ahead, Brian Wetcher.
Thank you, Mayor Gere. I would like to, just as a sort of a public service here, remind both council and the public that comprehensive land use plan submissions for changes can be submitted, I believe, anytime for the next annual cycle. And I would defer to staff about when the cutoff date for that is. I believe it's either March or April of next year. So there is no comprehensive land use plan within the city that cannot have a submission for change or addition, correction, or deletion. So I just put that forward in asking you to approve this plan because you can change it again in three months if you want.
Okay, Brian, thank you so much for that reminder. So at this time, unless I hear any other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. And this was listed this evening as a discussion item. So Mr. Lunsford and Mr. Volks, can you bring this back next week for action?
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I think I would invite them, Mr. Lunsford, Mr. Volks, to make any tweaks that they see fit based on our discussion. You know, friends mentioned the amount of time that they participated. Maybe there were a couple other small items. One other thing I would mention is the title of the plan. Our older ordinances refer, or resolutions refer to it as the ACFL Management Plan, not as the comprehensive plan. And as we did with the Parks Plan, I think we ought to make sure the title reflects what it actually is because there is some confusion about it being part of the comprehensive plan. It's not subject to the once-per-year limit on updates to the comp plan. So I think we ought to return it to its previous title. And I had a little discussion with Mr. Volks about that. I think the Parks Department seemed to agree. And then maybe it could just come back on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Volks or Mr. Lunsford, any additional things you want to say tonight?
No, I just, I appreciate the public support for going forward. I will reiterate what John said. When it comes to commercial activities, we're pretty good at saying no and have the chance to do it pretty often. And most of the time, the requests don't even get to the forest board because we're pretty good at discouraging it at a staff level. So we will, we will keep that up. And we will make the changes that we've talked about. And I don't see any reason why we can't have that ready for next week if that's what the council would like to see.
All right. Any other comments from the council? All right, it seems like we're going to hear from you very soon, Mr. Volks, on this, maybe next week. And what a great discussion. And thank you for all your work, both to the forest board and you and John. We just appreciate this. All right. Item seven, other businesses. Is there anything for the good of the order, council, that you'd like to discuss this evening? Okay, if not, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all for being here, and we'll see you all next week.